Regular school board meeting, Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five fifteen P M. Roll call, Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corpey.
Here.
Bruce Raboin, not here. Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Skoksidich.
Here.
Joanne Smith, here. Beth Shimon.
Here.
Joe Sullivan, Max Yusso. Nope, not today. Alright, we'll stand up and say the pledge. Oh, it's like, where did it go? It's usually right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Switch things up. Alright. Next we'll go to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'll second it. This is Rox.
Okay. Motion by Jessica and a second by Rox to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Open forum, I don't think we have anybody for open forum today. So we'll go into committee and administrative reports. I don't know if our student reps have...
They will be starting next month.
Next month, okay, perfect.
It's homecoming week.
Ah, they're busy. Awesome. Alright, Missy Tate, does she...
So I will, let's see here. I am going to be the presenter of all presenters this evening. We have homecoming week. So our principals are either out sick or at events supervising.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry you're gonna have to hear from me tonight. So I will have the opportunity to tell you that we kicked off homecoming today and we kicked off with an outstanding pep fest. There was so much energy in that room today. It was actually quite exciting. Staff danced for the event. We had the pinning of the seniors. We had the cheerleaders dancing. It was just, it was a pretty infectious place. The one thing we did learn in the event, our sound system in the gymnasium. So it's something that we have to be addressing. But the start of the year has been pretty exciting, even though there's been change and there's been some pickups along the way. One of the things that have happened with kickoff of the new school year is we have seen the element of excitement by our students and families and some of the changes and offerings that we have made. So when it comes to our online school, our expansions of C T E programming to some of the open campus opportunities that we're providing to our students, that has been acknowledged by our students and families. And they are very interested in what's seeing, what the future holds for F H S. You're gonna see some new graphics around the building. So there's just an element of excitement. We've had a lot of students in the building, probably, I would say, more at the start of the year than we've ever had before. So participation has been up and it has been just really welcome. So we're seeing that from academics to engagement in the events within our school, from athletics and activities. And staff are just very energized too. So Principal Tate did give me a report and she wanted to acknowledge that this is homecoming week. So people are very busy and she's out in our gymnasium right now as we speak. But she has brought back some of the old traditions of Falls High School, which has been pretty exciting. So we have, we are bringing back the traditional bonfire at the school district. So that will happen after Friday's football game and it's open to grades seven through twelve and that will be in the parking lot until eleven thirty. It'll be supervised by staff. Community members have been donating wood and other materials for the event. Today, we had the pep fest, which we introduced all of our homecoming royalty nominees. On Wednesday, we're gonna get back to having coronation. Principal Tate's decided to bring back coronation in the evening so more families can attend. So you'll see a greater involvement of communities. So you're gonna see that happen at the football field. Wednesday evening, we'll be serving, there'll be Bronco burgers for sale. There'll be dirty sodas and treats by the Bronco Brew and kids and community members who are volunteering. And then that is where we'll have the coronation ceremony at six thirty. Then we have the homecoming dance put on Saturday and that's in the F H S cafeteria for grades nine through twelve. And that will be from nine P M. until twelve A M., again supervised by families and staff of the district. Kids are very excited. There is a lot of energy again in the air this week. Next, she has on the docket an opioid awareness campaign. She has somebody coming to speak to students in grades seven through twelve on September twenty-fifth. We also have an event where we will have a seven-eight program that will happen and a program for the A L C. So all kids at the high school that have the opportunity to be exposed to this. The A L C has been holding weekly events where we've had community members engaging with students from mental health to substance abuse and just having greater conversations with some of our community partners. That has been very welcome. Mr. Evans has really led that, that group of students in our A L C program, making sure that the community is involved with them. One of the other things that will be happening in late September is we also will have a bullying and respect assembly. And that is being brought to us through our P V I S sales last year. We have a professional that the community, school community voted on. So that individual is coming to work with our students in grades seven through twelve also. So when we look at the enrollment and, you know, we have had a number of students enroll over the course of the summer and into the new school year and it's always welcoming to bring our students back. One of the things that is always disheartening to see is to see people leave our community. Because that means they went elsewhere, whether it's for professional responsibilities or to move closer to their family. But they, we have enrolled over twenty students so far this year, although with that comes some losses too. But we did get a number of students throughout the district that are either coming back or leaving their online school. And one of the things I can tell you is, as we talk about the high school, we were not quite prepared for the interest in our online classes or school. And we have had two students who have actually enrolled in the full-time school that have left their online school. So it is something that will continue to explore and develop. But we also have students that are taking classes of interest to them that we don't offer. Everything we offer onsite, we try to avoid, but for example, French. We have a student taking French or an introduction to design. So that's, that's very exciting too. So right now, the high school is up nine students from where they were last year. We did lose two students to Little Fork Big Falls with the four-day school week. That is the report that I have from Principal Tate at this time. Oh, she also wanted me to mention she's learning lots about college and the schools and expanding online learning. But she is really taking her leadership under her wing and she's doing a very nice job opening the school year.
Good. Awesome. You got Lisa's? Just keep going down.
Can we make sure we just switch the elementary and secondary with their names?
Oh, yes, I will make sure.
Good catch.
I'll address that. Don't worry about that. So next, we have, I had the good fortune of being the principal at Falls Elementary today and we are busy. So Principal West is out today, but I wanted you to know that one of the things that she did report to me based on her staff is the involvement of the community in the open house. I've heard a number of reports back that it was one of the biggest open houses and involvement because we had our community partners, we had our staff, the school board was representative of the event also. But we received so much positive feedback because every business owner or community member was there, gave back something to our kids and our families. But they also had the opportunity to provide information about the services they provide in the community. So we have been asked to consider that again for the future. And I know I'd like to just recognize our community ed director, childcare director, she wears many hats over here. Molly Larson took that project under parole and she did just an exceptional job. So people are very excited about that. So thank you, Molly.
Good job, Molly.
There are some changes happening at Falls Elementary too. And with that comes the departmentalized model that's happening over there. So our fifth and sixth grade students, which I'll talk a little bit about, have core homeroom teachers, but they get the opportunity to rotate to different teachers. It's kind of like a little indicator of what's to come in the future. But they rotate for math, they rotate for science, social studies as a one class, and then they rotate for reading. And I talked to a teacher over there today and he stated that this was a very exciting opportunity. The feedback from the kids is really positive. All of the teachers are having the opportunity to get to know all students and the kids are really enjoying it. It also provides a layer of going a little bit more in-depth when you talk about that rigor and experiments and being able to leave things out versus having to change with every subject. So that has been very popular. We also have a number of new opportunities for the kids over there, which is we have P E, which we have a new P E teacher. She has been incredible about engaging kids in some really different practices, but also offering Spanish, Indian education. There's just some really unique opportunities for kids, keyboarding in libraries. So we're bringing those back. And now our fifth and sixth grade students have the opportunity to sign up for band, which has been missing there the last few years. So that also has been very positive. So outside of enrollment for Principal West, they did have some students move in. They also had some students move out. So right now, they are up one student compared to where they were up last year at this time.
Their Indian education has started over there now?
I am not sure. They were doing inventories right now. They were doing rosters and looking at demographics. And Indian education is being led by Beth Latinsky and Brandon Barris. And they're right now doing all of the intervention and baseline assessments and then they will start with the work. But I know that she has been over there working with Mrs. West and has been working with the, I believe, the parent engagement team has been communicating with them. But we have started the American Indian classes at the high school and they are actively working with students. But I don't have the exact answer on student work that's happening at Falls Elementary yet. But I'll have Lisa report on that for you.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Great. Alright, Molly?
Thank you. I wrote something down, actually. So I'm the community ed coordinator. So I have community ed and I have preschool and E C F B included in this report too. And then as well as pals. So community ed, we're just in a firearm safety course, which was a surprising little while for my first, like, kind of course. It was like thirty-nine students enrolled. So that was a pretty good turnout. We have an upcoming defensive driving course on the twenty-second, so next Monday. And then forty-five people have registered so far. So that's pretty good too.
Wow.
And then we have ongoing open swimming and gym times. And then we have a driver's training course that may happen in October, that last week. And then, yeah. And then we have an upcoming pumpkin painting night. I want to do a craft night. So we spot a whole bunch of pumpkins and we're sort of painting them all as a group. So hopefully I can start getting like themed craft nights to go for community ed. And then I have pals. So Angela Scholder is a pals coordinator. She does a fantastic job. She hosted Bingo last week and had a pretty good turnout. Twenty-two people showed up. And then recently they went to the Michi on a shopping trip and they had twenty-five pals show up as well. And they have a craft night this Thursday. Preschool, my wing down there, oh, it's incredible. There's just so much smiles and laughter all the way down there. So it's good. We have fifty-nine students currently enrolled in the preschool program. And we have two open spots in four-year-old preschool and three spots in three-year-old classes. We have an upcoming screening event, which is on October fifteenth from eight to two-thirty. So we're trying to get all the kids screened before they enter kindergarten, except required by the state. So hopefully that goes well. Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to our preschool, like, team down there. They keep that, they keep the ship going. So it's pretty good. And then currently we're gonna be starting, like, early learning seller ships to help parents pay for tuition for preschool. And then, yeah. And then we have E C F B. So both morning and evening classes are full. But Janessa Velasquez is currently looking for folks to join her planning committee. So if anyone is interested in the public, they can come and join.
Awesome. Thank you. Does Tim have a?
He is young.
Okay. Alright.
Love good visual.
Oh, is he in a report through there?
Yeah, can you see that okay?
Yeah.
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 Okay. So I will just, I will just give my report from here and you can ask questions as we go. You also have a printout that I've given to all of you for reference. In the event you have any questions, even after the meeting, you can reach out to me. So I wanted to briefly go over the presentation that I did with families on August twenty-sixth virtually. Because I think it's important that we have a recording of this. And I also think it's important that if you were unable to attend as board members, it's really critical that you have the information that was delivered to our community. And then you have reference points if you need to go back to it. So we had a number of people join us that evening. Obviously, I would always like to have more. But you can never appease everybody's schedule. So this is a presentation that I felt was important to bring to our stakeholders, just to let them know what was happening in our district, some of the work that's happening behind the scenes, but also where we would like to go. And really focused on our big pillars as we go into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So those are the topics that you're gonna see in this presentation. I'm gonna give you a quick version of the presentation. But we talk, we are gonna briefly talk about the strategic vision of I S D three sixty-one. It's the school board administration, our schools and programs, the referendum update, changes ahead, which includes protocols and safety. And then I didn't delete from there, but we did have a review of the open house and what was going to come. So something we use as a tagline for I S D three sixty-one is "We're better together." This year, our overall theme for the staff is "Believe." If you're not a Ted Lasso fan, please hop on. That's a great series. But one of the things that I felt was really important in some of the feedback that we've heard from community members is making sure we have access and knowing where we can find information. And really developing a clear path towards communication, which you're gonna see was one of our goals. And that's definitely an area that we can improve upon as a school district. So I S D three sixty-one website, these are the live links. This presentation will be shared so the community has access to this. But it is under construction due to the changes, the significant changes that have happened for the school district this year. So people have been wonderful about sending feedback, providing information. But it will take us a little bit of time to get that updated with all the things that have transitioned over the course of the summer and into the new school year. You can also follow us on a very active Facebook, social media page. If you want to see anything that's happening in the course of the school day, past, present, or future, that is a wonderful place to find it. And there is a team of people that run the Facebook page and it is very active. We have forty, two-hundred followers on that page and we are just pleased. It has grown significantly. I think over a thousand people in the last year.
That is amazing.
Yeah. Yes. So we're very pleased about that. So we reach a lot of Bronco alumni on that page. If you don't follow it, I encourage you to. We've got people from, from every decade that follow the page. It's really fun to see their active involvement in the page. We also have a community education social media page and Molly and her team do a tremendous job in getting that information out and what's happening on community education. And Tim is working on his social media page, but also on our school schedule page. And that is ever in development because we always want to do it better because it's not quite as streamlined as we would like it to be. So any active feedback that you have on that, we welcome that. The district has had a strategic plan. The district worked with Team Works. And I think it's been a few years since you really came together as a school board and did that. But we did have a subcommittee that met with Team Works at the end of last school year. And we really talked about what is, what is going well within the strategic plan and maybe where we needed to pivot a little bit. And they are going to be coming back with us after they took the information from our Team Works work session. We had school board members there. We had administration there. We had teachers there. And then we also had teachers from different grade levels, but also some of our specialists there. And some of the areas that really rose to the top as we have spent the last year together and also looking at what the strategic plan said formally when you worked with your Team Works on the gates. But these are the areas that really surfaced as either continuing the work or we need to pivot and add these two priority areas to the school district. So one, as we know, is positive school attendance. And this is a foundation that I would, I believe, based on the data and research and working with our leadership teams in each school and our district leadership team is probably, outside of school safety, is to me, number two priority for I S D three sixty-one. And that means working with our students who do not attend the school district, but also having greater conversations and educating our students and families and staff on the importance of positive school attendance in every grade, from preschool through twelfth grade. And as district M C A tests come out and even our fast bridge assessments, that, you know, that summative informative assessments that we work on, when you look at I S D three sixty-one's attendance numbers, they directly correlate for the number of students who are not proficient within our school district. And I know sometimes we like to say, you know, it's the teaching and learning that's happening in class. And we want to, we want to start pointing fingers, but we have to look at the whole child and we have to look at the whole system. And when students are not in their seats, whether it's sickness or athletics or activities or just, you know, they're not feeling up to some for the day and don't want to come to school, that's a direct impact on not only their education, but the education of others. So really, the goal by M D E is ten absences or less during the course of a school year. Otherwise, when you exceed ten absences, whether you're excused or unexcused, that correlates to chronic absenteeism. So when you start looking at our student performances, it directly correlates to our attendance rates. And in the current data, we have I S D three sixty-one, between the two schools, fifty to sixty percent of our students are chronically absent. And that is a direct correlation to our student assessments. So we need to do better, but we also need to educate on the importance of the why behind it. So that, to me, is an area that will be a critical component for our leadership teams and our work for the next two to three years. We sent a team this year to explicit instruction training and that is working through the M T S S processes, which is Rock's Multi-Tierred Systems of Support acronyms. We're gonna try and do better in defining those. And one of the areas that we are really going to get back to is we're gonna start back with the basics and that tier one. And that means core instruction, not just jumping to interventions. So that core instruction that's happening in the classroom, classroom, that rigor, that engagement, tier two would be what I call that extra scoop, so that interventions or enrichment that kids need. And then tier three is what we would call a double scoop. So, and that's a smaller group, intensive interventions. But we are getting back to core instruction. We're making sure that our students are in the seats during core instruction, that there's not pullouts happening for services or interventions and making sure kids are retaining those grade level standards through instruction, teaching and learning in the classroom. The next area that we're gonna continue to develop is our systems of support through universal processes and procedures. I project for the district, this is gonna be a goal that is gonna need about one to five years to truly do it and do it well. Everything from what does drive-up arrival and dismissal look like to how do you put in application for a field trip to background checks. There are just processes and procedures that we need to put into play, but they need to be held somewhere. And then we need to educate and follow those practices. So to look at the district as a whole, I would project for the next three to five years, we will have a great school-wide system of frameworks and processes and procedures for the district as a whole. Next is student engagement and that is not only from classroom, what's happening in our classroom, but student engagement throughout the school community. Getting our older kids to work with our younger kids, getting kids actively engaged in athletics and activities, removing those barriers so they have those opportunities. But also really igniting a level of learning, making sure that we're offering classes and learning experiences that are not rooted in adults, they're rooted in student, what the students are looking for. And making sure again that we're removing barriers and creating opportunities for our kids of all abilities. The next one that we have is a thriving culture and climate. And that is really about making sure everybody who enters our school district feels safe, feels welcome, respected and empowered. And as barriers come up and as there are situations that come up, which they do, making sure that we have greater conversations and address those and making sure we sit down and have restorative conversations. But what is really important is that we know our community and build relationships within our community and people get excited to come to our schools. Strong partnerships between homeschool and the broader community, that is a priority for the school district. And that's where we want to make sure that we have educational indicators that involve not only home and school, but also our community members. Because we have great teachers within our school community or within our community and bringing them into our schools and getting our students out into the community is really important. So those are your six priorities as we move forward into our strategic vision for I S D three sixty-one. We also talked about access to our school board members in the meeting. And the link that we shared is the school district's webpage also, where they can find the agendas. And then we also went through who serves as our school board members. We also shared that you welcome feedback, both positive and areas of improvement. And it was really important that the community knew, I felt, that they can approach you with that information because that's how that information helps get circled to me if they, if they don't reach out to me. The administrative team, we, this is the highlight for the three of us. The administrative team for the district is the first all-female team in the history of I S D three sixty-one. So that was a big celebration for us. And so we decided to take a photo opportunity. And then we also launched the new information of our new principals with Lisa West at Falls Elementary and West End Early Education Center as a principal and Melissa Tate as our high school principal, Alternative Learning Center principal and online principal. You're gonna frequently, frequently hear me use this statement, "With change comes great possibilities." It doesn't mean there's not gonna be barriers and it doesn't mean there's not gonna be ups. I also look at it through a lens of opportunity and that's what I'm gonna briefly talk to you about ahead here. This information is all information that you can go through in your handout. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight is that the West End Early Education Center is evolving. And we have a long ways to go there, but there are a lot of really exciting things happening down at that end of the building. And the three teachers and our special education teacher, Mrs. Christensen, have really dove in and they're working really hard with Molly and her team to make sure that we are enhancing educational experience for our littlest learners and really learning through play. And we're not just talking play, but play-based learning, the opportunity to be outside to learn and really focusing also on that social emotional skill set of learning to share, learning to sit, learning, you know, fine motor skills, gross motor skills. And that team is really invested in the future of the Early Education Center. So when we look at, again, as a district priority, we're really focusing on I S D three sixty-one as an investment in the whole child, social, emotional, academic, community resources. You know where the new wing is? It's a closed-off area on Falls High School. You'll see new graphics that have gone up on that end to showcase the wall, the doors entering, that you'll be entering the West End Early Education Center. On the backside of that door is the same signage, but you're also entering Falls, or Falls High School. So people know that they just can't go in and out. You have to have approval to go into that area. The teachers have started their training this year on the pyramid model, which is a social-emotional framework. It's prelude to what we use in our elementary school and high school, which is P V I S. And then there's just some additional highlights, the technology we're into play. And then the few changes that we've had in our early childhood family education and we have a great response. We've shortened the timeframes and we've awkwardened a little bit different timeframe and the families have been very receptive and actively involved in that. Those are the processes and procedures that are on the board for West End Elementary. The road next to West End Elementary Early Education Center is now a two-way street. And we had to do that because we're gonna be closing back the back end of Falls High School for the addition and construction to start with the addition of the C T E area through Dave Olson's wing, we call it. And buses will not be able to go through there. Traffic will not be able to go through there. So I work with the city and law enforcement on opening that up to a two-way street. There will be an area that you can enter the back way for emergency purposes, but otherwise it will be closed off. And then you see the drop-off and pickup locations and the busing system, which we'll talk about a little bit later on that. Falls Elementary School, some of the highlights there, which I talked about earlier, is we have a departmentalized model. We have a well, well-trained R E D A C training staff. They're, they're ahead of the game when it comes to the R E D A C training. We also have, again, some expansions in our specialist program. And the P I S, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program. And the PIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program for Falls Elementary, is called Bronco Pride, and under our tagline this year, we're referring to it, "Our Way of Life at Falls Elementary."
Thank you.
Again, we are serving the whole child. We have social work over there, we have a student support specialist this year, checking connect mentor, Indian education, ESL, in addition to reading and math intervention, and our core, core teaching and learning experience for our kids. All students in grades K through 12 now have access to a full social emotional and skill development curriculum called Character Strong, that is a part of every school week that students are experiencing a social emotional lesson that's being taught within their classrooms. Lots of interactive technology, but as we know, that, that is a small portion of our day, because the best learning happens through active engagement with one another and not technology. We are working diligently to have our students experience field trips in addition to having our staff experience opportunities for learning outside of the community. Some of the field trips that they go on is Starbase, they go up to the national park. Right now, we have, we have the sixth grade class trip possibly being revived by a team of teachers, and we're hoping to have another opportunity at Wolf Ridge for our kids. So our teachers are excited, they want to get, get our kids out into some new learning experiences, especially that have to do with the outdoors. One of the, as we talk about celebrations and barriers, I would say the biggest barrier this year is having to look at the floor at that elementary school. It's not very pretty, but it had to be tore up to get ready for construction, because we needed to have the asbestos removal done before staff and students returned to the building.
All right, it's progress.
It's progress, I love that. So there are the Falls Elementary processes and procedures. It took us a while to evolve into a well-braced machine, because we only had one drop-off, morning drop-off arrival location, but with the feedback, positive feedback, problem-solving feedback from some of our community members, we have now two areas that you can drop off, and one is specifically for grades three through six, and then the other traditional drop-off, which goes through the park, parking lot by vehicles, otherwise we have a full busing route. It has made it much more efficient and much quicker, and these ideas came up from our community members, so we really appreciate that problem-solving feedback. So thank you to our community members.
Good.
Next, we have the Falls High School highlights, and again, I, I just want to go back to the celebration, I would say is just a renewed energy that's just continues to be uplifted by our students and staff, so that is, that is really exciting. Some of the highlights are college in the classroom, some of the new online offerings, expands of CTE. As if you didn't notice, online Bronco Brew is a hit. It's probably, it's probably one of our biggest acknowledged areas on our social media platforms by people from all over, so that is very exciting. They also have opportunity to, the students have the opportunity to experience Character Strong curriculum, that is taught by our school social worker, Ashley Hines, and our student support specialist, Chris Simpson, and they are enjoying it, and the students are very engaged at the high school with this, this curriculum based on skills and social emotional and mental health. So we're very grateful to have them as part of our school team. We also have great partnerships, again, within the community. We have a student class that's led by Mr. Anderson. We have a partnership where we have a class where the students go over to Rain Lake Medical Center and explore some of the careers in the medical careers. The students are enjoying that. He is also teaching work-based learning. Semester one is just really about what work-based learning is, but then we'll have the opportunity where part two of this class is where kids will go into the community and work with some of our community partners. So he is just in the process now of developing those partnerships with community businesses. And we have students who are interested in mechanics and welding, to administrative assistant, medical, so there's some really great learning opportunities that are going to happen for our students. The construction has also started here, there's pockets throughout the district where the floor has been removed for asbestos removal. We will start seeing some of the ceiling tiles come out, they're going to start, start with the lighting, so like Member Crosby says, it's an indicator of progress, and that's very exciting for everyone. This slide indicates some of our processes and procedures, which I will move into the maps. Community education, Molly gave us a great recap of what's happening in community education, and I just want to highlight, now, once we get through screening, Molly and I will start, well, she has already started doing some research on the childcare after-school program, but now we'll start reaching out to families who may be interested in that as we get ready to look at bringing that to our district for the second half of the school year. She revisited some of the programs that are happening, and anybody who's interested in offering a class or community education can reach out to Molly. Recap of our referendum, we did talk about this at the last board meeting, but I just wanted to revisit, the, a majority of the phases have been, the fitting has been approved, the construction phases are in place, we are going back to rebid with some modifications for Bronco Arena. Some of the things that we did not know would happen was the Minnesota Department of Education made us put in sprinkler systems based on even the age of our building. We were hoping we would get grandfathered in, but that did not happen, so we do have some areas that had to be sprinkled, and those are going in as we speak and/or starting soon. We also had extended areas that ended up needing asbestos removal that we did not know about, once they got in and started looking at the construction. We also have to remember that we are navigating significant construction areas in, in the months and year ahead, and though it is an inconvenience for us, safety is a priority, so we do ask for continued patience and understanding, because once it's over, it will be well worth the investment and we'll get back to business, but we do have to prioritize safety and efficiency for not only our contractors, but also our staff, students, and community members. So when we look at the phases, we are going to be starting with Falls High School, then we, after the new year, we will start with Falls Elementary School, and when the football season is open, over, we will start with the stadium, and then the last phase will be Bronco Arena. Even though there are things happening in all of them, I'm just talking about that really big infrastructural change for construction. So you can find updates that will be starting on our social media page, you will hear updates, ICE, among the radio the second week of every month, also in our newsletters and our messaging systems when big construction components are coming out. That will go through our messaging email and all call systems, so families know what changes are ahead. If you have any questions, I do ask that you not call our school principals, but that you reach out to me as a superintendent or a school board member. Our committee members for the referendum that serve on the referendum are Member Crosby, Member Johnson, and Member Soltzstedt Beach. So this is a map for Falls High School that was shared with the community members, and as you see, we have some new drop-off and pickup lanes to suit the closure of the backside of Falls High School. And in the red that you see there, that is going to be the construction zone, and across the street there, you will see the, the trailer where Nexus is housed. Number one is the parking lot for the preschool pickup and our staff, so they can still access on that far row to the left, that is now a two-way street and has been signed by the city for us, which we really appreciate. The city has been fantastic to work with during this process. The yellow line that you see going across on 11th Street is now our bus drop-off and pickup for preschool through 12th grade. That also has, there are temporary signs there ordered by the police, so there's no parking there during the course of the school day. Across the street from the yellow line, I don't know if you've noticed, but we're very excited to say that we have new signs that have gone in there, because one of the areas of feedback and barriers that we received from the community is there's nowhere to park if you need to run into the school quickly as a parent, as a, somebody who has a scheduled meeting, so that is now a 20-minute parking area. And so you'll, the city put in permanent signs for us, so people can pull up, run in, drop something off, or if they have a brief meeting. So we ask that all students and additional staff are overflow and event parking now should officially happen in what we label as number three on, on the map. Number two is the parking lot that you see, that's that drop-off loop, drop-off and pickup loop, so parents can just drive through, drop their students off, that's another door that they can go through if they have long waits or long pickups, we do ask that they use parking lot number three. So number five, that is the area on the side of Bronco Arena. There's going to be a lot of construction going on in that side lot, but we did ask that they leave the front side available, because that is where handicap accessibility falls, and so that, that will be open to people who have a need. So it's really important that we identify that that is a significant need for, for people who have mobility issues or have barriers to get in, so we ask that that area is left open and that the rest of the community use parking lot number three. In addition to that, that is going to be our main event parking area. Falls Elementary map is still in the process of being updated. This was the original map that was rolled out when we just had one drop-off location, but as you can see, the green line across the bottom, number two, labeled number two, is where our new drop-off and pickup line should go, and so they loop into the parking lot, drop off or pick up their students, and then loop back around and go down that green line. Although, right behind number one, we now have added a drop-off, a drop-off area, AM only, because one of the things that was happening is we were not getting families and kids into the school by eight o'clock, so families could get to work at eight o'clock and students could get into classrooms by eight o'clock. So now we have two locations, it is moving as smooth as silk, kids are able to eat, students are in their classroom, and it is going very, very well. In addition, it has really eliminated the congestion that we were having. But as you look at the yellow line, that is, I believe, 15th Street, I have to remember all this, that is the, the route that we ask the buses to take, we ask cars to take different routes, the buses loop in, go in front of Falls Elementary, do drop-off and pickup there, and then they loop back down around and go over to Falls High School. One of the questions that we did have is, does my student have enough time to get breakfast? The answer is yes. We have scheduled breakfasts at Falls Elementary, and for our older students, if they get in close to the 8:00 AM marker, they go into the Falls Elementary cafeteria, grab a boat, and go straight to their classroom, and in that boat, it's just a disposable tray that they go in, and they go into their morning meeting with their class, so everybody has access to breakfast. The next map that I briefly want to show you is the contractors for the solar panel. We're just recently up here, and we had to have a significant conversation about the location of the solar panel. One of the original conversations was locating the solar panel on the backside of Falls Elementary School as close to the woods as possible. After further investigation into that, there was a barrier with how, when you have it right next to the woods, they're, they kind of detracts from the sun, so the sun can't get through as much as they would like it to get through. In addition to the location that it was in, it was the furthest away from electricity and hookup lines, which meant the cost was up. So to get back in that budget allocation, we had to revisit some different options. So the athletic director, myself, and our new facilities manager spent some time with the Nexus, or not the Nexus team, excuse me, the solar team, and we came up with a Plan B. And this will be the most cost-effective, it also will not deter from any of our fields or create any barriers for our athletes, so you are going to see it more center-stage between Falls High School and Falls Elementary, because the closer we can get to one of our main buildings, the, the easier it is for them to run the lines. And it's not as, as maybe big as we anticipated, so we know that this will not impact any of our athletics programming or plowing infrastructure that we have at the school district. So the area where you see labeled 8.9 is the new location of the solar panel. We're very excited. They just brought all our equipment for installation up here.
Is there fencing around that then too?
Yes, I believe there is. I, I have to cross-check that, but if there isn't, there will be, because that, that is something that needs to happen for safety and security.
Yeah.
Are, are the panels vertical, or are they going to be tilted?
I do not know the answer to that, but that is an answer I will get to you at all. So need to know information, again, I just want to revisit, I apologize that this is taking so long, but I think it's very important that you have this update as board members. But one of the things I want to go back to is, on this slide, you're going to see the importance of school attendance and how even when we don't think it's impacting our child's education, it impacts our child's education, which is the very reason we have instituted a spring break. We're really trying to get people to invest in appointments and their vacation time around the school calendar. As you can see, positive attendance that truly doesn't have a dire impact is nine or fewer absences in the course of a school year. 10 to 17 absences is an indicator that we're really eking on how we can impact a child's teaching and learning, because they need to have those grade level standards taught and learned each year to get ready for the next school year. When you get into 18 or more absences, it is a significant red flag of how it is impacting your child's ability to learn, understand, and move forward with grade level content. So I, I cannot emulate that enough. It also takes a child three days, a child misses in school, it takes that child and teacher three days to get that child caught up. And it also does set other peers back, because sometimes the teacher may not be able to move forward, so I just ask that if anybody wants to have a greater conversation, please reach out to me, but this is going to be a priority for us. So really assessing illnesses, we don't want kids in school if they're truly sick and fevering, revisiting vacations, revisiting when we're pulling students out to travel for athletics, keep them here as long as you can, I cannot emulate how important that is.
I'm assuming there's a policy in there about intervention at a certain point?
Well, intervention, it, that's a, that's a really great question. Intervention is really, intervention is truly meant for students who have learning struggles. And there's a difference between learning struggles and learning exposure, because what we are seeing is, our goal is kids who are intervention is to give them those extra scoops that they might need to be at grade level and push them out and take the next group that might be struggling. And it's really a pathway to start looking at, do we need to assess after two rounds of six weeks of intervention, are we looking at the possibility of a special education evaluation? So it's about really identifying, is it exposure, or is it a learning disability or another barrier of, in some capacity? So I-
Maybe, maybe when it comes to attendance, intervention isn't the right word, maybe?
Yep.
Maybe, because I'm thinking you don't want a kid to get to 18 absences and then say, what's going on here? Like, is there a certain point where we step in and say, hey, you've missed five days of school, like, what's going on?
So that's, that's a super great question. So one of the things that is happening for the district this year is we have established an attendance leadership team, so we can start looking deeply at the data. Who, who are our students that are tardy every day? Who are students that are missing? Are they missing grade level content? Are they missing, is there a pattern? Is it, is there a different barrier? Is it transportation? Is it mental health? We're trying to really support our families, because we want to be there not to catch them, but how can we help? And I guess that's, that's the stance we're coming from. So what's going to happen once we get our attendance data really solid up and running? We have a pathway where they're going to hear from us at three absences.
Good.
Then they have a pathway that they're going to hear from the district at five absences. Then they're going to hear from us at 10 absences. They're going to hear from somebody, either from a classroom teacher, to an administrator, to me, and it is required by law, students have to be in school. And there is, there is a legal statute that says there is an indicator that if families meet a certain threshold, it can be turned over to the county, and that's, that's not something I like to say out loud, but it is the reality. When you have a student that's missing 25, 30 days of school, those are red flags, and we, we want to create opportunities, but we also want to remove barriers. So if there's something somebody needs, please reach out to your building principal or our school social worker, because we're also here to help.
Yep. Okay, perfect, thank you.
We have transitioned to a new student information system, Infinite Campus. Mr. Casey Stepper is saying how better, he has been a savior for us, and he has taken on as the role of the new technology director, and we also have Justin Carney, who is a technology assistant. Though we still have kinks to work out, the new system is going to work beautifully and create greater opportunities of modes of communication and opportunities for teaching and learning, and we're very excited about it. We just have to work through the kinks, which is very normal in a, a student- We just have to work through the kinks, which is very normal in a student information system. But we're very excited because the future of that holds opportunities for athletic programming that maybe people can pay with credit cards at the door. And so we're excited about it. But again, when you implement something new, it takes one to three years. So we're working that. If something's not working for families, we do ask that they reach out to us. They can contact our main office if they cannot get into their student portal. But you should not be accessing Skyward anymore. And you can set up your parent portal with the directions that I will share online and through our student messaging system. If you can still not get in, please call your front office and they will walk you through it. We are getting ready to go back to our refreshers for Professional Development Day on October 6th. There is no school. We will go back to revisiting, recertifying our team for ALIS training. And that is our school safety and security processes and procedures. There'll be information that will go out to our families on this. Unfortunately, it is a nationwide crisis right now, school safety. And if there is anything I can emulate on behalf of myself, in school board, school safety and security is our number one priority. And again, just like the construction, it can create some barriers of efficiency. But at the end of the day, it's about keeping our staff and students safe. Again, there are some basic processes and procedures for the district. It really reviews the drop off time, pickup times of our school, safety expectations. The school doors of all schools will be locked from 8:00 AM until 3:00 PM each and every day. Everybody has to access through the main doors of the school. We also have a security system, which is called the Raptor Check-In. So anybody who enters the school has to have their driver's license ran through the system. And that system will throw a red flag if there's anything that we need to be concerned about. So that is an expectation for when you enter our school. So we do ask that you bring your driver's license when you come in. Also, there's the calendar for the year for review. You will see the spring break is slated for March 9th through 13th. We are doing a lot of marketing on our schools and what our schools have to offer, from our preschool programming to our elementary school, to our online, to our ALC and our high school programming. And that is the end of that very presentation. And I appreciate the time to update you on all of your needs.
I'm sorry, I know that you did a great job, Beth. And I attended the online one when you did this presentation. And I was wondering, is it archived for other people to view who missed it?
Well, it will be now.
It will be now?
Yep, yep. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to do this presentation today was so we have a recording. Something Casey, the tech director, and I are in conversation about is, we don't have a good recording system within our school district and it is something we need to do. So also we can have professional development trainings where when we onboard people, they can come in and access it. So right now, it'll be available online after tonight. But, and I will push that out for social media and our home newsletter too.
Okay, I have a couple of things that I was wondering if I could highlight. The ASL acronym, you know, it used to be called English as a Second Language. I believe what you were talking about was the emotional and social learning?
No, so ESL is still English as a Second Language. Great question, because we want to clarify that. That's not an acronym I clarified for you. Rosa Christensen teaches that within our school district. And she works with our students who have language barriers. But SEL is social emotional learning. And that is where you're going to see our social workers and our check-in connect and our student support specialists are implementing that work on our campuses.
Okay, just, please bear with me, I just have a couple of acronyms here. In terms of CTE, I know that a lot of us already know it. But you know, when you talked about the area where Dave Olson works, I just want to, once again, highlight the career and technology.
Yep, career and technical education. That is a growing area across the country. Not everybody's on a pathway for a four-year college. We are seeing kids want to go into CTE, career technical education, right out of high school. And there's trade schools that the kids can go to. And one of the things that many high schools across the country are looking at is how can we get licenses, licensure for kids within our own schools or get them set up with credits prior to going to some of their trade schools? So for example, Principal Tate and I leave Sunday morning to attend the CTE summit down in St. Cloud for two days because this is probably one of the fastest growing areas in education right now.
Okay, and then is there any news on the Head Start?
That's another great question. The answer is yes. I'm currently working with the district attorney. There were some barriers on the language in order for us to move forward for this year. Right now, we are slated to look at the next school year. But we have to have an agreeable contract. And some of the language in order for them to come in at the start of this year did not meet the requirements for us to house Head Start within our school. So the district attorney is currently working on that.
So it won't be January of the next school year?
Well, my operating will be. But Head Start is going to have to make that decision if it's something that they would want to do.
Okay, and the Bronco Brew means that what people, what this school is offering is information on how to start up your own coffee shop, right?
Yeah, so it's an entrepreneurial class. And Carla Olson Line is leading it. And it is very, very popular. But available in the mornings will be coffee. And right now, we have seminars that are happening, like she does pop-up shops. They're going to be selling. The Bronco Brew is going to be working at the field on Wednesday night. But what it will evolve into, they're going to learn about the business side of it. And then ultimately have a coffee shop before school starts that the kids will work at. They will look at the budget side of it, the revenue side of it, the expense side of it, and what it really looks like to start up a business.
That's wonderful. Let's see, in terms of the absences, how do you count the absences for half-days? When you say you're looking at less than ten, are you thinking of, so if there's half-days, you do have a way to count to see if the kids are missing the whole day or not, right?
Yeah, so that's another great question. So one of the things that is happening that's new to Infinite Campus for us is we can take AM and PM attendance now. So we're still evolving into what that, to make that happen fully, but we've started it, is still there'll be a morning attendance at the elementary and an afternoon attendance. So then maybe we have a student that's arriving every day at 10:00 o'clock. We're going to be able to see that that student's in attendance for four hours during the course of school day. But boy, there's an established pattern that maybe the first few hours of school, there is a barrier there in some capacity. So it will help us drive, the data will drive some of our decision-making and intervention work that we have. In addition to, we're going to be able to look at that data and say, if a student arrives every day at 10:00 o'clock, and let's say their core math and reading are first thing in the morning. And then if we look at that student's academic performance and see that student's really struggling, that does not necessarily mean a pathway towards academic intervention. That is a pathway towards an attendance intervention because that student's missing core content. And does not mean there could be, I'm not saying it couldn't be a possibility of a disability or a learning disability in some capacity. But there's other variables. And that's when I say the whole child, we're looking at the whole child, from school attendance to social emotional learning to peer relationships. We're really trying to take a macro look at our MTSS process.
Okay, and the last comment I'll make is that I had to pick up my grandson in elementary school part of the day through today because he wasn't feeling well. And I was so pleased because the teacher sent his work to do. So the minute I noticed that he had some time, that he was looking pretty good, I said, here you go, do your homework. So I appreciated that. Thank you. That was great feedback.
Any other questions?
No questions, but I can say, as a parent who had to stop into the school real quick and sign some papers, it was awesome to be able to just park out front. Last year, I had to park, you know, in the parking lot, walk all the way in. I'm like, yes, parking right up front. So that's great.
All right, committee reports, policy committee. We're going to continue going through the policies that need to be updated. We now have a new, you have a new assistant. So once she gets her feet wet, we'll get some policies on the agenda again here. Athletic committee, do you guys?
We didn't meet last month, but I think we met after the last board meeting. It was like the day after. And we did have some conversations, no big decisions were made. We talked about paid trainers, which I wasn't aware of what they were. So Tim was kind enough to explain what a paid trainer was versus like an EMT coming into basketball or volleyball games or something and sitting there. Some schools have them. I guess it's not something that we have had, but they wanted to find out more information about it. So it sounds like they're going to look into that and get more information on that for us and see if it is a possibility or not. We talked about community ed versus school programming and what they pay for purchasing and where the funds for those programs go. And we also did a walkthrough of the FHS gym area to see different things, like the basketball hoops, things that we had talked about previously to see if they were fixed. The basketball hoop was a big one, obstructing the scoreboard, and that's now been solved for. We also walked through the pool areas, including the locker rooms. Beth pointed out some things that, you know, the facilities have fixed, like cracks in the tile and different areas like that. And we just walked around there to see what was done and what still needed to be done. And that was about it at the last meeting. We were meeting again in October.
Awesome. Legislative committee, I know Rox, you-
Yeah. This year is not a budget year, it's a bonding year, which means that the legislature will focus on capital investment projects, big ones, like roads, bridges, public buildings, et cetera. Also, the legislative session starts in February, which is when we'll start getting weekly updates on all the real details about what's going on in the legislature. But before that, we need to be working. I called Beth today and we're going to try to meet with the early childhood special ed teachers and possibly submit a resolution. And so I'll update you on that later on. And the other thing is that the Minnesota School Board Association team will, or they'll be sending a team to Washington DC soon to promote funding for schools.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to let everybody know tomorrow, there's an open house for the transportation highway, like 1171. Right out here is going to be meeting to get ideas of a different route. So I just think it's important if one of us, some of us can go. I don't know if you were going to go, but I do know that they talked about the lights being moved to a different spot. So I think that's going to affect us, drop off, pickup, parking, everything. So just wanted to let everybody know that's happening tomorrow.
Thank you.
And when is that tomorrow? Is it in the evening or during the-
Tomorrow, 5:00 PM, at Bacchus Community Center.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Anything else? Anybody?
Tim is here if you want to.
Tim, do you want, have any?
No, I just came up to talk.
All right, all right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Motion by Dale.
I'll second.
Second by Tina. All right, I have a motion by Dale and a second by Tina to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
I have one thing I just wanted to touch base on, the FHS student handbook. I will be honest, it was a really busy weekend and I wasn't able to go through all of it. But I did find a couple typos. And I don't know if we're able to hold it back until we can go through all of those because I don't know if they've been printed off yet or is that something we can work on?
Yep, we can update it.
Or is this like a first, do we have to do it twice?
We like to push it out right away, but we can change it and update it at any time.
Okay. Because I was just, I just didn't know if it had to be on the board agenda.
I would like to see, I would like to see it approved tonight. And then if you have recommendations for change, we can bring it back next time.
Oh, sure, okay.
Oh yeah, just highlight the changes.
Okay.
That makes sense, yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I'm going to abstain because I have a family member on the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, motion carries. We'll move to action items. Improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Resolution of acceptance. Gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members." Therefore, be resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD #361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion, I'll second.
Motion by Tina and second by Jessica. For the dent shop, huddle advertising donation of $3,000. George, and I'll have a break, break, thank you. Huddle donation of 200. Bronco softball booster ice machine, $200. Bronco track and field boosters ice machine, $400. Bronco cross country boosters ice machine, $400. Bronco swimming and diving boosters team supplies, $4,878.65. And ice machine, $400. Arena scoreboard sponsorship, the dent shop, $500. Up North Builders, $500. PCA huddle advertising donation of $5,000. FES music instrument upgrade, $1,500. STEM class launch donation, $1,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whereupon the resolution is declared adopted. Second action item, approve the location of the solar panel installation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, this rocks.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dale and motion by Rox to approve location of solar panel installation. Beth showed us on the picture, the new location. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question because I wasn't quite sure from the picture where it was. Is it going between the Bronco Arena and the elementary school?
Do you know where the fields, the fields are?
Yep.
The baseball fields. And our athletic director, he took off, so.
Behind the Falls Elementary.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure where that was.
So that's behind the Falls, if you looked at the back of Falls Elementary Playground and the back of the high school, you'd have halfway through.
Kind of by the college.
Just like out in the middle of the field? So there's no risk of it like being damaged if something lands on it there or anything?
Nope, and you know, like that off to the left there is the track, trap over there. And then the big baseball field and then moving back. I mean, obviously, the goal is to have fencing around it. And I believe that is the plan.
Okay.
But they, Tim was out there because the biggest, you know, concern, making sure that we had no baseballs flying.
Yeah.
And the football tee practices back there too, so.
Yeah, and the football field right behind, right, straight back in that long area is kind of where they use. So Tim said that we won't be impeding on any of their areas.
Okay. And nothing for like disc or anything for track area?
No, they go the other way.
And even like the snowmobile?
And that will be on the tree line, the snowmobile.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So nothing, awesome.
No red flags that were brought to our attention.
Good. This is where I thought it was going to be, the first place I ever realized it, yeah. I didn't think about it being there.
Well, there was a very old drawing out that in, you know, when you started this journey. And so, but it was not a smart cost. It was not a smart financial decision.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks to Dale for helping with that.
Yes, good job, Dale.
Instigate or instigate it, implement it. Initiate it.
Our classes are very excited for the next phase of the educational side of this investment.
Oh, that's great.
Great, all right. So motion by Rox and second by Dale to approve the location of the solar panel installation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. And let's see, certify the proposed 25, paid 26 levy at the maximum. Do I have a motion?
I like that motion.
Motion by- Motion by Jessica.
I'll second.
And second by Tina. All right. Discussion?
We're going to have further conversation on this when we talk about the budget, right?
Yep.
Yeah. This is just the formality of.
This is the process in our, in our levies, what we have to report to MDE and based on property taxes.
Makes sense.
Awesome. All right. So a motion by Jessica, second by Tina to certify the proposed twenty-five paid twenty-six levy at the maximum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that.
Can I just interrupt?
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
Sorry.
Before we close, I just want to recognize that it's National School Board Appreciation Month. And I, on behalf of the district and I think our community of International Falls, I just want to recognize that I don't think people realize how hard you work behind the scenes. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the school district and a community member, the dedication for your service to our students, to our staff and representing us with the state of Minnesota. You're a fantastic school board to work with and we appreciate your investment and dedication that you give to the district. So thank you very much.
And I guess too, we want to thank Bruce for his contributions over the years of being on the school board as well. He has done a lot, been a lot and given a lot of advice and education on a lot of different, different things. And we appreciate that. So thank you to him as well. Anybody else? All right. We had a motion by Rox. So I have a second.
I'll second.
All right. Second by Tony. All right. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
Opposed?
Six twenty-six PM.
Awesome. Thank you.